Okay, I'll call this meeting to order. Please join me for the pledge allegiance.
Allegiance States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with a vision of justice for all.
Okay, Steve is gone today and Wade is on... On the phone, okay. We don't have any guests today. Any announcements, recognition, or accomplishment anybody wants to talk about? Okay. Our public correspondence and participation has a three-minute limit. No discussion of personnel, no exceptions. The Colster Board of Trustees welcomes public comment on issues and concerns. This is the point in the meeting for comments on matters not already on the agenda. Comments on agenda items will be accepted when the item comes up during the meeting. Interested persons may also submit views in written form to the clerk or superintendent prior to the meeting, and those comments will be brought to the attention of the board during the meeting. Do we have any correspondence or public participation? Okay. 5.01, FFA out-of-state travel request presentation.
Thank you, Board, for having us. We're back after you saw, you heard us about us last month. If you don't know me yet, I'm Andrew Barrett. I'm the high school education teacher as well as the FFA advisor for Colster FFA chapter. We have four of the six members that are hoping to go to National Convention with us. Two of them were out of town, so we couldn't have them, but we grabbed the other four. We have Maxine, Corbin, Charlie, and Brandon. And they have a few things that they would just like to say to you as the board about our upcoming trip.
I'm Brandon Mullin. I'm a sophomore and the first vice president of our FFA chapter. I'd like to go to Nationals because I think it'd be a fun experience to go visit a new city with my friends. I hope to gain leadership experience while at National Convention because it... Every night there's a session where it's just a large meeting like this. And personally, I'd like to go see the National Band or participate in it if I make it. Thank you.
My name is Charlie Derby. This is my senior year at Colster Public Schools. The reason why I want to go to Nationals is because this is my opportunity. I've looked forward to this day since I was a freshman. I've been doing all the fundraising and the weird stuff on the weekends. Being able to go, this is my opportunity. And I cannot be more excited to go for this opportunity. It's being able to go see the chapters from all over this America, all over the states. Hawaii, getting to be able to talk to these people, that's what I'm looking forward to. We're gonna go to Nashville, get to go see cities that I'll probably never go through again because I don't like cities. But going to cities, it's gonna be a blast for me, get to go see a racetrack and go see cities I'll probably never get to go again. And the opportunity that it gives us is gives us an idea where we should set our FFA chapter for the future. To be able to compete at these competitions, it takes a lot of knowledge and, well, skill. And so our skill level to be able to get there, I think this opportunity gives us an idea and an open look for the younger people that actually get to go. So that is why, so I thank you for letting us come and talk to you guys.
Thank you.
I'm Corbin Wilson. I'm a sophomore and I'm a reporter. I would like to go to Nationals for the experience of getting to travel out of the state and getting to talk to other groups of FFA members, getting to see how other officers do things and how they act. Maybe if they have good ideas, we could incorporate it into our FFA and... Just, I guess just to have a fun time. Thank you.
I'm Maxine Goffington and I'm a sophomore. And I would like to go because it's an experience that I might not ever get to do again. And I want to learn, like, what other people do and how they... How their chapter runs FFA in our schools. And I think it would be fun to just go overall. So thank you for letting us go.
So any questions from the board or anyone here in the meeting?
And do you guys, you guys have the funds in your account to go, is that correct?
We do. We are still going to do fundraising efforts throughout the fall to get there. But we do have that set aside where we could comfortably go to National Convention. Some events maybe later down the year might have to get scrapped, but I think that's a fair trade-off for going for an event such as this.
Anything else? Thank you guys for coming, and we did approve your travel already. We just wanted to hear from you, from you guys, so thanks for coming in, we appreciate it.
I think we'd like to see our presentation after you get back as well.
Of course, yes.
I'll take pictures. Some weird stuff to do on the weekend.
We'll definitely get a presentation put together when we return. It'll probably be in the November meetings when we can have a chance to do that, but we will definitely have one ready to go.
Great, thank you, have a good time.
Thank you.
Thank you guys.
Grab a cookie on the way out.
Yes. All right, consent agenda.
I move the Colster Public Schools Board of Trustees' approval to see consent agenda as presented.
Second. Okay, we'll go straight to a vote on that one.
Aye.
Angie?
Aye.
Wade?
Aye.
Aye.
All right, board agenda and governance calendar. We did have a couple changes we wanted to make on this. Kristy, remember?
Yeah.
Sabrina, it's not open to the public. When I tried to open the board agenda governance calendar, it told me I needed to request access.
Okay.
I'll work on that.
I think we just wanted to move a couple things around.
Look at it here real quick and we'll see here, we're looking at August. Student and tenants agreements, we're gonna scrap because those will be do whatever time policy is. This used to be when we did a blanket. Approval. And then, um, let's see, what else? The extracurricular passes? Didn't even, did we decide what that was? Extracurricular passes review?
We didn't know. We didn't know what that was for.
Right.
I didn't know if that was like...
That was the green slips, aren't they? That was the green slips?
This is extracurricular passes, so this would be like the pass.
I didn't know if it might be the gate fees that we talked about.
Yeah, that's right. So we were gonna move that back to July.
Yep.
Or whenever we wanna visit those fees, if you wanna do it sooner than, Tom? I don't know if you have a weigh-in on when you would like to revisit fees? Just to look at them with the board?
I thought we did look at them.
No, what I'm saying, every year, annually.
It's on the calendar for August, but we feel like that should be moved up.
Yeah, it'd be nice if we could do this.
Okay.
Okay. So whatever you guys wanna do with that one would be fine.
Let's stick it in June. June, okay.
Yeah, so that'd probably be better as your parents, if it goes up or whatnot.
Okay.
And then I know that Jen usually brings the OT peach, yep. Past contracts earlier, they've been in June before. Does that sound like a good time still?
Yes.
Okay.
August is too busy.
I agree. And then I think we're gonna move down for unless you guys wanted to leave the sick leave committees on this board agenda for August.
I think they're fine.
Okay, because we only do the CFA, you guys only appoint the ones for that, and then the superintendent does the CCA, so... It's just they won't have their committee meetings until, uh, your, so, end of August, right, Terry?
Okay, I'm on the next.
Okay.
Nineteenth, yeah.
Okay, so...
And they come back.
We could even move it to later in August, so if we left it on there, that'd be fine.
Okay. And then we're going to get rid of all of the goal monitoring because we did that in one big survey instead of...
Do that in the spring, yep.
Yep. And that was each month.
Because we have to submit, so we submitted March 29th this year, so we'll probably leave it in that. What do you think, February, I don't, yeah, January, February? Okay.
We could start it in January and then finalize it in February.
So then that way we can do that survey in that timeframe and have it back so when we do that accreditation procedure again. Right, add them to you? That'd be great. Yeah.
Um, so could we, could we look at possibly moving that? Start for the handbook process to May and approval to June?
Yeah.
So that the administrators are here?
Yep, that's great.
It would make more sense.
Yeah.
And it's a whole lot easier to have the done in May than be scrambling right now.
Yeah.
That would give you June to review on then?
Yeah.
Absolutely.
Okay, good. Anything else? Are you good? Good. Okay, no old business, so we'll move on to new business. Uh, 9.01, senior lunch, open campus.
Hello, my name is Slade Scannell. I am the president of the senior class. And my name is...
My name is Deborah Verlaine. I'm the vice president of the senior class.
And I'm Amy Vincent, secretary of the senior class.
We, the representatives of the senior class, are looking for your approval for the senior lead during lunch. And below here are, these are the rules, if you want to look them up in the classes, you guys.
Is there a copy?
It's the...
We don't have a copy. Here, I'll give them some. How many? Uh, a lot, make ten.
Uh, they're the same rules as last year. And on the bottom of it, it has a permission slip that will be sent home with the kids. And they'll have to have their parents and their signatures on it agreeing to the rules. And you'll have to bring that back so they're able to leave during lunch.
Parents have to sign even if their students are 18?
Yes.
And do you want some of the rules part on there?
Uh, I looked over it.
You can lose that privilege, correct?
Yeah.
If you are tardy coming back more than, I think it's three times.
Yeah.
Uh, you lose the privilege for a couple weeks. If you're driving appropriately.
Yeah, no underclassmen and their vehicles.
Right, underclassmen and...
Senior school.
And no food in the common for classrooms. And, um, can you bring your classroom, your classroom?
No.
So, did you send, not to me, Robin, or?
Not so.
I saw a calendar invite, but I didn't see the...
Will the door remain locked?
Yeah.
We have been locking the door, so. And maybe then try to open it or they're not saying that.
It went fairly well last year when I saw it, there was a couple problems, but...
Shall we?
Thanks, Mrs. Patton. Sorry, I don't see it, I don't have it.
It's also nice to support the businesses in the community. And you feel like it worked? Yes. For the most part, they do a really nice job. Yeah. And I feel like we have a really strong senior class government. And I did stress to them that it would be crucial to their responsibility to help monitor their peers and do a little peer improvement too, so.
I move the Colster Public Schools Board of Trustees' approves high school seniors to be allowed to leave campus for lunch after they have turned in the appropriate paperwork.
Second. Okay, any public comment on this agenda item? Any from the board? Angie?
Aye.
Wade?
Aye.
Aye.
Thank you guys.
Thank you.
Thank you for that.
All right, 9.02, we have one resignation listed. Bodirita District Paraprofessional. This is just informational. 9.03, Certified Employees. This is an answer.
I am making a recommendation for Mr. Dana Strong for a history position. Dana will be coming to us from Idaho. He has been a teacher for almost 30 years, I believe, so I actually got to sit down and visit with him while I was on my way home from Idaho, or from Oregon. We sat down in Idaho and visited and very nice gentleman and was excited to kind of work, so. Also interested in breaking opportunities, so.
I move the Colster Public Schools Board of Trustees' approves Dana Strong for certified hire for the 24-25 school year.
Second. Any public comments on this agenda item?
What, um, subject area? This year. Okay.
Any board comment? Wade?
Aye.
Aye.
Angie?
Aye.
Aye. 9.04, Employment Substitutes.
Okay. We're recommending for hire the following district substitutes. Emily Vincent, Jan Vincent, Charlie Vincent, Sharon Alder, Judy Sessions, Kristy Torgerson, Laura Newmiller, Susan Brown. Correct me if I'm mispronouncing your names, please. Milla Perry, Holly Bailey, Joe Myers, I'm not sure, Mena?
Nina.
Nina, okay. Maybe Alicia Steer, Rose Hanser, Ann Hills, Sean Sessions, Katie Phillips, Autumn Stewart, Tyler Egan, Kathy McLean, Joe Kester? Okay, Monte Bilbro, Venia Big Left Hand, Lorraine Hanson, Don Asbury, Candace Angel, Tom Nansel, Don Purdon, Justin Weber, and Leslie Hall.
I move the Colster Public Schools Board of Trustees' approves district substitutes for 24-25 school year as presented.
Second. Any public comments on this item?
Um, I know we can't discuss employees, but if a classified employee is driving a route bus, they're not to be considered a substitute. You can hire them as a sub, but for purposes of pay, they get the regular rate and it's in our CBA.
Yep.
Good, we're gonna, yep, we're gonna allow that one. I was gonna send an email today, but...
I saw it, it was right away. Yeah.
But just for purposes of pay, it's, I think they're not to be considered a sub.
Okay.
Hey.
Anything else? Any board comment? Tiffany?
Aye.
Angie?
Aye.
Wade?
Abstain.
Aye.
9.05, Employment Extracurricular. This is Mr. Dussold.
I would like to recommend Rachel O'Connor for the band and vocal assistant position at Colster High School.
I move that the Colster Board of Trustees' approves Rachel O'Connor for the extracurricular band vocal assistant at the high school for the 24-25 school year.
Second. Any public comments?
As a band mom, I have to say thank you, guys. Rachel is absolutely one of the nicest people and is always willing to help. And I appreciate it as the extra band mom, so thank you.
Any more comment? Angie?
Aye.
Tiffany?
Aye.
Wade?
Aye.
Aye.
Okay, 9.06, Adult Education Coordinators.
Can you read through it? I'll go ahead and do it.
Okay.
Okay, recommendation for hire for non-affiliated co-adult education coordinators, hiring as presented. Jewel Davenport, Janelle Asbury.
Okay. And the pay is the same as it was last year for those positions?
I believe so, sorry, yeah, yes.
I move that the Colster Public Schools Board of Trustees' approves the following hire of non-affiliated co-adult education coordinators for the 24-25 school year, Jewel Davenport and Janelle Asbury.
Okay, any public comment on this item? Any board comment? Okay, Angie?
Aye.
Tiffany?
Abstain.
Wade?
Aye.
Aye. Okay, 9.07, Certified Sick Leave Committee.
This is who's it? Okay, so, gonna recommend, uh, let's see, Colster Public Schools School Board of Trustees' does not approve the following motion to appoint administrative members to district leave bank committee for CFA. Scott Otrima, Robyn Nansel, and Brittany Allen. So...
I move the Colster Public Schools Board of Trustees' approves the appointment of administrative members to the district leave bank committee as presented for CFA.
Second. Any public comment? Any more comment? Okay, Wade?
Aye.
Aye.
Angie?
Aye.
Aye. 9.08, this time we did not forget to add the classified to this meeting.
I'll be right out with you.
Yeah.
Is that me? Okay. All right, so, same thing, Colster Public Schools Board of Trustees' approve or not approve the following motion. Uh, making motion to appoint the administrative members to the district... Wait, we got the wrong one. Where's the classified?
CCA is classified, right?
I'm all classified, but it's not...
Yeah, you chose the same three.
Oh.
Admin team.
Oh, for the admin team, yeah, it's Scott Otrima, Robyn Nansel, Brittany Allen, sorry.
I move the Colster Public Schools Board of Trustees' approves the appointment of administrative members to the district leave bank committee for CCA as presented.
Second. Any public comment on this item? Any more comment? Wade?
Aye.
Aye.
Angie?
Aye.
Aye.
Quality of life representative.
Okay, so, I'm gonna recommend myself for this one?
Great. I know we've been lacking, yeah. I know we've really been lacking with having a representative on this committee in the past year, so.
Okay.
We appreciate you stepping up to do it. And I know that they'll be happy you're there too.
Good.
I'm a...
I move the Colster Public Schools Board of Trustees' approves Mr. Scott Otrima, superintendent to service director on the Quality of Life Corporation Board.
Second. Any public comment?
Been on that board ever since it started, and it would be really nice to have an active member from the school district back involved, thank you.
Thank you.
Looking forward to it, thanks.
Any board comment? Angie?
Aye. Tiff? Aye.
Wade?
Aye.
Aye.
Okay, 9.10, Policy 3551. Um, this is the policy that Mr. Dussold originally brought to us during that work session. And we talked it over and then I sent it to MTSBA. They had some proposed changes, so I sent that back to Mr. Dussold and he was working on that, adding or incorporating some of their changes, so. I'll let you let us know what you did.
Basically clarify the definition of, they asked that we clarify the definition of, um... That we add marijuana, tobacco, nicotine for illegal drugs because marijuana is illegal for people under the age of 21. The, um... Issue of, they wanted us to add in something about the rules for selecting a third-party administrator, which is actually covered under 3551 P1. So that's already in there. And that was really the changes that they wanted us to make. The others, like, some of the other suggestions were actually verbiage that we didn't change from the original policy that actually came from them. So, uh, but those were the major changes that we made to what we have already proposed.
And this will take two readings to take effect.
Tom, if it's highlighted, does that mean it was in there before or we're adding?
If it is highlighted in red, it is what we are adding. If it's highlighted and struck through, it's what we're deleting.
So, Tom, I only had one question, I had to ask this earlier. So under Part III confidentiality, it's kind of blocked in, it's not either struck out or...
Okay, so that, I'm sorry, I...
Clarification maybe, go ahead.
Okay, so, um, it, so we've defined the designated representative as, like, it's defined in the policy as the school administrator or the athletic director, okay? We also have the executive secretary who acts as a designated representative but is not stated in the policy as that. So if we are, um, if we're going to use, and I have no, I have no concern with this either way, I mean... But if we're going to include the executive secretary as a designated representative, we need to add that in. I don't know, that's not my decision, that's y'all's decision, so... So that's why that's there, because it's an observation saying...
Yeah, I noticed that sounded more of a, almost a question or comment. I wasn't sure if there's discussion on that before I got here or just what that was.
Yeah, because you come up to where it says, where if you come up to the second page, designated representative or DR is the principal and/or athletic activity director, okay?
Yeah.
And again, if we're going to use, if we're gonna say the designated representative will only notify the principal and activities director, I mean, that's kind of redundant if that is the designated representative. So they're gonna make it doesn't need to be there. But again, if we're going to include the executive secretary, then we need to add her up there and then I can give her that black and white. I just wasn't sure what you guys wanted to do with that, I mean...
In the past, the principal or the AD have been the designated representative because as few of people who have access to that information is best policy.
So if we leave the policy as is, then it's the principal and the AD. Okay.
All right. Thanks.
So you have a question? Um, not until a public comment. Okay.
I move the Colster Public Schools Board of Trustees' approves first reading of changes to policy 3551 as presented.
Second. Any public comment?
What happens if the principal, maybe, are both gone to an event for a couple days, like a state fair or something? If we were gone, then Alicia would be the designated representative. Okay. Because she would be for the middle school. I would see results for the middle school. She and the AD would see those.
Right.
But if one of us were gone, then she would step in. She would step in for the high school.
Okay. Okay.
I just think a few, at least a number of people protect everybody involved.
Yep. Any more public comment? Any more comment? Angie?
Aye.
Tiffany?
Aye.
Wade?
Aye.
Aye.
All right, 9.11, Policy 8205. Meal chart.
That's me. So I, we had talked in the spring about taking a look at this policy because it hadn't been revised since 2017.
revised since 2017. It was very generic, it, um, it basically just, it gave some information for the parents, but it didn't really, really state what we, what our meal charge policy, what it would do, what we do. We were following it, I can tell you that, for several years. So, Sabrina had given me like a generic or like a blank template to kind of take a look at last year, and I revised it and sent it to the board. Let's see, I didn't make myself a copy, but I have it on my phone, so we're good. So basically, I looked at other policies from other schools and kind of compared them all and tried to, tried to figure out what would be best for us as far as Colstrip. And a lot, some of the stuff that was on the generic one definitely needed to be added because it wasn't in there. The thing I did take out was the Colstrip School District does not allow meal charges except during the first 30 days of school. That obviously has not been followed for a very long time. I just basically added, I don't know, do I need to go through all this and read it all for you guys? I mean, you guys can kind of see.
I think just what you've changed.
So, the only thing I changed is that I took out that 30 days, and then I added, I added basically the purpose of our policy, our goal as a district, what we need to comply with as far as the federal USDA policies. And if, and I added, this is the part I added, and I don't know, it says if a student is without meal, sorry, not my glasses, either, meal money, the administration will take action deemed necessary to collect unpaid meal charges by ensuring the nutritional needs of the student are met by providing the student with a regular meal. And then it says if financial hardship exists, parents and families will be encouraged to apply for free reduced prices lunches for their children. Felt like that needed to be in there, and that our admin team needs to be involved when it comes to that. Like, just if, if there is somebody, I mean, we need to know if there's a student that is just, you know, if there's something going on, and then if we can help. It's very confidential, but I feel like they should at least be involved if there's something going on. I gave two options, there was four on the one that you sent to me. That's kind of what I was leading up to you guys, because I'm not sure, I mean, it's basically cut and dry. We either continue to serve the kids' meals and allow them to charge, and just hope that the parents are going to pay, or we put a cap on it. So, those are the two options that I gave you guys to look at. The one, like I said, if there are no funds, we will just continue to charge the account. And then the second one is a student is allowed to charge no more than $25, and we could change that if we wanted to. Because the other two options, one of them was absolutely no, once they hit zero, we don't let them eat at all. I don't want to do that, I don't think so. The other one was that if they met a certain balance, then we give them a peanut butter jelly or cheese, a grilled, or not a grilled cheese, but a cheese sandwich, but we still charge them full price. I don't like that either, and I don't want to go there, I just don't. I mean, I know all of you agree, anybody in this room agrees with that, so... I guess I left it up to you guys what the options were, or which ones you, you would like to see. And then the zero balance prevention, that's just some information for the parents, like, just letting them know that they're the ones that are responsible for the payments. It tells them where they can get online and track balances, where a student can get online and see their meals. I think most of the kids can get onto their infinite campus, and it'll show them right away anyways. And then just more, a little bit more if there's a behavior issue, or if there's something else going on, you know, that we get together and try to come up with a solution. In the past, when the seniors graduate, we have just automatically transferred their balances to a sibling without talking to a parent, or sometimes the kids will come and say, well, can you give me that money? We never give them the money unless it's like under five bucks. But I put this in there that basically says that if the parents want the money back, that they need to either email me or submit a letter, so we have some documentation. And then it also says that they can request, and that just through an email or a phone call or whatever, for me to transfer the money to this account. And the last one is adult meals. So, I got reviewed last year, my first year from the state, and very good, by the way. But she went over a few things with me, and one of those was, is the adult meal charges or policy, like, that goes in with this? And that one states that adults are not allowed to charge meals or à la carte purchases as per USDA policy regarding school food service use of federal NSLP funds. So in the past, we have allowed our staff members to charge lunches. We're not supposed to do that. If they would like to eat, they need to pay ahead of time. We had one staff member leave the district this year and left a negative balance, and we'll never see it. I don't, I mean, I can send letter after letter, but I don't think I'll get it. So I think that's something that we really need to follow. And so, that's it, those are the... And if there's anything else you think that I could add, I think that's basically just after looking at all the other policies from other schools, I just, some of the things I was like, no way, that's just, you know, that won't work for us.
I've, I've got a question. I, I was looking at this, and so in, in option one, there's, there's a robo-call. In option two, is there, is there also a robo-call that would go out to the parents? Because, I mean, and, and I'm, I'm as guilty as anybody else. My, my kids come home and say, hey, by the way, you know, I'm, I'm 10 bucks in, in the hole with, with lunch. And so, I, I don't, I don't ever get any information until it's already too late for me to say, well, alright, we sent you with lunch, but you decided to eat lunch. And so, is, is there, is there an option to have a robo-call even with option two? So that the parents can be the ones?
Yeah, if you look where it says zero balance prevention, it says, where it says the parents are responsible, it says notices of low or deficient deficit balances be sent at a rate, regular intervals. So they haven't been sent for a long, long time until I took over last year, so I had to get people to do that, and then I, I did let them go for them, they should. So I, that's another thing that I think that this year, wherever you guys would like me to start at, that's where I'll start at. We hadn't, I mean, we hadn't even sent a letter or a robo-call in four years, three years? Because two, two of those years, everybody was free, so that was different, but, but yeah, it starts sending them. But we can start, like, in the one, I would like to start sending them at zero, like, if you go to negative, negative zero, or I can even go like $5, but parents can also set that up themselves, so on infinite counts. But for me, I want to go from, from negative zero, then you'll get a robo-call so you know, but only once a week. We don't need to have them going out like 3,000. And I'm trying to time it so it doesn't go out when grades go out, or when attendance goes out already, because that can get really overwhelming. Yeah. And like I said, if you want to set a higher, if you want to go with option two and have like a limit to where I have to cut the kids off, we did it in the past, and it did work. And it does lower the negative balances. We have quite a negative balance right now left over from last year. So, we could go negative 50, I don't know. I don't know if that's something you want to do. I know, nobody wants to make that call. I don't even want to make that call.
Are these fees, like, are there fees where you don't get your diploma until it's paid?
And that's the crazy thing about it, is that when they become seniors, miraculously they come in and pay it. But I can tell you right now, some of the balances I have, if we keep letting them go, they're gonna be $3,000 by the time they're a senior. And who can come up with that kind of money?
And I think we do need to do letters. I, um...
I do them once a month right now.
No, I know.
Yeah.
And, and maybe we can help by maybe helping contact some of those parents, too. I, I would never be in favor of not feeding a child, because it's not a kid problem, it's a parent problem, I know, so...
I, I, I do agree, I do agree. That's, it's just some of them are just like, no, I'm not gonna pay. And we're really good about the free and reduced letters at the beginning of the year, we have them with us at all the schools, and I have all the balances, and there's a direct cert list that Brittany already gets that has some of them automatically on there.
You like to do it on infinite campus, too, right?
Yeah. Yeah, there are some that like still throw a piece of paper, but...
I agree, I'm, I would never be in favor of not feeding a kid.
But I also feel like if there, I don't want to never feed a child either. However, if there aren't any consequences, like she said, there's gonna be $3,000 balances, and then what?
Some schools have it in their policy that they hire a collection agency, and at the end of the school year, if they don't pay, they send them to collections.
Doesn't ours say that?
Our, does the old one say that?
I thought it did.
I thought I read that, too, Brittany. Right here, under meal, meal charge policy, the second paragraph.
Oh, yes. We don't have a collection agency.
We have not done that yet, but we can figure it out. That's an option that we need to look at?
Right, if you go with option one, then they need to know that, hey, that you, if you don't pay your bill, that, you know, then that's what we have to do.
I'd be in favor of that, because then it's going, you're collecting from the parents, not from the kids.
Yeah, and they're responsible, and it goes on them, and I, I love that idea, too. It's just, I didn't know if we could actually, if we could hire someone on at the end of the year, or...
I'm not sure, we'll figure it out.
You know, and, and some other schools, they'll send them to, is it the county attorney in Forsyth? But I don't know if that does any good, I don't know.
Maybe, maybe even just including that language, you know, if this balance remains outstanding, you may be referred to collection agencies.
I don't think we should, you may be, I think you will be.
But, I mean, maybe just that would mean that's a...
Because here's the deal, if it comes down to where the school is gonna pay for it, it has to come out of the general fund. It can't come out of the lunch program to pay those negative balances.
Right.
So, or otherwise, somebody would need to fundraise, and there are people out there that have approached us about that, but that's a tough one, because how do you decide who should get the money? Like, you got parents that pay all the time, well, why, why don't the other parents have to pay as well?
Good question. Just, you're curious, so, when it comes to the collection agencies and who's doing some of these things, who would do that? I have just kind of, I'm used to all shit that spells it out, like, who calls it?
I mean, it would probably have to be Brittany, or, I, because I don't know that Lorna could do it, because, I mean, she...
No, she not, and privacy issues, that I am the only one that knows the negative ones.
I've just seen these things written, and then they get lost because the follow-up lacks because of...
Right.
You read it, and then there's no, I'm used to one that spells out who calls it $25, who calls it certain amounts, when it's a principal, it's just line for line. And I like this, it's a little broader, but then again, who does what, when, then it gets lost. So I didn't know if you did, you know, from house experiences, or...
I don't know that we've ever gone to collections.
So it's busy, but we've never done it, right?
No.
So, yeah, maybe spelling it out, where would make, yeah, if it's in there, nobody's doing it, someone, who is the, who is the someone?
And it does say, like, in their uncollected meals that will be sent to collections per federal guidelines, so we're within what needs to be done.
Yeah, I don't know, I like that, I mean, that's good, just, again, by somebody.
I'd say it's more effective than giving a kid a peanut butter and jelly sandwich, because you're gonna have parents out there that really, you're still feeding their kids, you'll be up here.
Right, and they're getting charged still, and so why would you charge a kid for peanut butter and jelly and just give them a regular meal? We used to do it, I remember, a long time ago, it was a cheese sandwich sometimes.
That's where you end up on the menu.
And, yeah, but you wouldn't believe how many schools still have, they have that policy, yeah. I, I did not call them to ask them if they actually did it.
I just have a baby in the lunchroom watching, you know, seven-year-olds get served, and it's not traditionally, so I...
Do you remember that?
Yeah, I remember.
Janella's, yeah.
Yeah.
Well, it's traumatizing. It may not be their responsibility, it's not their fault, you know what I mean?
Okay. So can we, can we designate people? Can we make a player?
Yeah, if you make that in your motion, and then, you know, choose an option.
Yeah.
And this will also take two readings, so, after tonight, then it can be cleaned up a little bit for the second reading.
Okay, thanks.
Okay, I move the Colstrip Public Schools Board of Trustees approves reading, the first reading of Policy 8205, Option 1, and adding that the business office will send out, or use collection agency to collect funds that are negative. Right? At the end of the school year? Yeah, at the end of the school year, yep.
Do you want to put a limit on it, or like a minimum?
Before it goes to collection?
Because we definitely don't want to send somebody to collections for $50. Yeah.
What's the, what's the amount? What's the cultural amount you feel?
Can we reset for second reading?
Can we?
Yeah, I think we can, yeah, and then we can, yeah, we'll, we'll do that.
With determined amount.
With amount to be determined. On second, on second reading. A second? Any public comment?
Might I say something?
Yes.
You might want to take, where it says federal guidelines, you may want to spell that out, because if you're setting a policy for the parents to see exactly what the consequences are, you might want to have the federal guidelines set out so they know exactly what's gonna happen.
Right.
That's good. Yep, yep.
Any other public comment?
Yeah, if there's ever a chance to apply for a grant, just for all kids to get a free lunch, I, I think that'd be a great service, because there's a lot of our kids that come that really could use that.
Anybody else? Any more board comment? Okay, Angie?
Aye.
Wade?
Aye.
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 Thanks, Steph.
I'm your next one, too.
9.12, Increase to Adult Meals and Milk.
Yes, so, for the past two years, they, OPI has been sending out some information on adult milk prices for each school year, and basically what they state is that for adult lunch prices, that it needs to be comparable or more than what the federal free reimbursement is. So, this year's is $4.45 is the federal free reimbursement. Our adult meal right now is $4. We said $4.50, right? Right? Okay, so, we're recommending that we raise it to $4.50. That's what our visitor lunch is as well right now. And then when it comes to the adult breakfast, it says the same, and the federal free reimbursement for that is, this year it's $2.84, they bumped it up quite a bit. So I think we had $2.50. Now, in this letter, with, when it comes to breakfast, it basically says there is no, you can't really play with that one, you have to be higher than the $2.84. So, that's what we're recommending, well, we were gonna recommend $2.50, but at this point, we either go $2.85 or $3 for an adult breakfast. Oh, no, it's $2.25 right now, so we would go up to $2.85 or $3. And then when it comes to the milk, I found this out this last year, when a kid wants an extra milk, we've been charging 50 cents. On my invoices, the district is paying 54 to 56 cents for the milk, so, we're, we're not even covering the cost. So, and, and the milk prices, the last time they were raised was when Debbie and Joanne were here, and that was 2015 and '16. So they raised the milk price, price at that time 15 cents, so that's what I went with for the extra milk. As far as the student meals right now, I've looked at a whole bunch of schools comparable tests, the $3 for a student lunch and $1.75 for breakfast, that's still really comparable to everyone else. So, and that one, is it something that they're coming in and saying you need to change? That is completely a test, which I don't really think, I don't want to touch that one right now, to be honest. So, that's.
So you want 65 cents for the extra milk, $4.50 for adult meal, and $2.85 for adult.
We can get away with $2.85 for breakfast, yes. Who does the money? Oh, she's not here. She might not like us at that price, but but that's okay, because 60, you know, 65 cents is the same. But yeah, I would, I don't think I'd want to go any higher unless you guys feel like we could go to three for an adult breakfast.
And they recommend $2.85?
They recommend $2.84.
$2.84.
That's our, that's our federal reimbursement.
Okay, so it's the lowest that can be.
Right, and this has changed since last year, so what I'm hoping is that next year, it doesn't change again to where we have to go back in and do something else.
I mean, if it does change, we can just come back again, and then it steps up.
Yeah. I think $2.85 is good. Yeah, I have no problem with that.
I move the Colstrip Public School Board of Trustees approves the increase to extra milk from 50 cents to 65 cents, and breakfast prices for adults from $2.25 to $2.85, and the adult lunches from $4 to $4.50 for the 24-25 school year. Second. Okay, any public comment?
I have a comment, just as a parent, if, if it would help, I, I think, like, if we, I'm thinking I would be happy to pay more money if I'm visiting my kids having a lunch, because I don't eat school lunch often when I'm working. But when I do, I wouldn't mind paying more if that would help out the school budget, and I'm just thinking maybe if, if it would help to maybe give, if this affects teacher meals, like maybe give working teachers the bare minimum, like the $4.50 requirement we're moving up to, but as a parent, I wouldn't even mind paying like $5 for the meal, just pay a little extra for true visitors coming in, if that would help the budget at all.
There are some schools that they do pay $5 for visitors, too.
Yeah, so like maybe give the teachers a break if this affects to them, them, but then visitors, they can pay more, and it's still the cheapest meal in town to come, for the kids, and I don't come for, you know, I mean, I come for the kids, not to just get a bargain.
But they're only feeding you as much as they're paying the kids.
That's right.
Thank you.
As a parent, I would agree, and I think even as, in the accounting world, I would rather deal with somebody and a $5 bill than change all the time, the amount of, the amount of savings that parent is going to see is not worth 50 cents for the amount of extra work in dealing with change all the time. And I would highly suggest even $5 and $3 for lunch and breakfast, and just round numbers, because I can tell you right now, the amount of savings every week in dealing with auditing pennies versus round numbers is hours of work for one person. When you have round numbers to audit, it is saving a lot of people a lot of headache.
I was going to say the same thing about breakfast, like personally, I would rather just know that I was spending $3, but $2.85 for three days is $6.75.
It's a win ultimately for everybody. I'm okay with $3 for the breakfast.
Do we have a policy that lists visitor charges, or is this?
It's just always been on the website.
We just set the.
We just set it, yeah.
Okay.
Yeah.
Any more board comment?
If that's the case, then I, I would, I would recommend that we, we take milk to, to 75 cents rather than 65. $3 and $5. I mean, I, I'm, I, I agree with that, it's, it's just easier to, to work with rounded numbers. I mean, and not, I, I don't think that milk should cost a dollar, but I remember paying 25 cents for that, so I, I don't think it should quite cost a dollar yet.
I honestly didn't know until I looked at the invoice, and went, oh, we're not even covering our milk costs.
Change in the motion?
Yeah, I can amend your motion.
Yeah. We have a motion from the second, right? So I need to move to amend my emotion, my motion.
Yep.
Prior motion. Okay, so I move to amend previous motion, striking $4.50 and adding $5, striking $2.50 and adding 3, and striking 65 cents and adding 75 cents. Okay, a new motion. Do you want, do you want to read that so we know what it is?
I was going to fix that later. Okay. Tiffany moves to amend previous motion, striking $4.50 and adding $5, striking $2.50 and adding $3, striking 65 cents and adding 75 cents. And then, previous motion stated what was adult breakfast and adult lunch and milk, so.
The previous motion wasn't voted on, so we need to vote on that one first.
Um, no, she rescinded it, right? She amended it?
No, I amended it.
I amended it.
Okay.
Should we vote personally first?
So we're going to either do two things, we're going to either vote on the first one, and then amend and vote on the, the amendment, or rescind the first one and, and
We do.
make a new motion.
I think that'd be the easiest.
I think so, too.
You have to rescind both of them.
Yeah, just rescind everything.
Yep.
Your amendment and your motion.
Yep. Sorry, Brittany.
No, you're fine.
All you really have to do is, because you didn't vote on the previous motion.
Right.
All you have to do is whoever seconded it first has to say, I withdraw my second, then the other person says, I withdraw my motion, and then make that your, your motion. If you didn't vote on it, all right.
Right. So I withdraw my second. I withdraw my motion. And amendment. And I'll say it all.
Now it's not amendment, it's an original motion.
Now you can, yeah. All right, Britt, whenever you're ready. I'll wait. Okay. Okay. I move the Colstrip Public Schools Board of Trustees approves the increase to extra milk from 50 cents to 75 cents. Adult lunch meal from $4 to $5, and adult breakfast from $2.25 to $3 for the 24-25 school year. Okay, any public comment?
I'm going to put a limit on how many milks our kids get now.
No. Any further board comment? Okay, Wade?
Hi.
Hi.
Angie?
Hi.
Hi.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you, Steph.
Nine thirteen, handbooks. Okay, let's do it.
Recommended action is Colstrip Public School Board of Trustees approves or does not approve the following handbooks for 24-25 school year, as presented the PBE, PBEES, student handbook, FBMS, student handbook, CHS student handbook, CHS course description handbook, appendix A, discipline, appendix G, emergency response, safety plan, appendix H, district programs, special ed, special education, section 504, preschool, special education.
Okay, do you want each of your administrators to tell us what they changed in those?
Sure.
Okay. Let's do PBEES, student handbook.
Okay. Just a few small changes. Nothing too major, I hope. We've added that kindergarten students must be body trained before they can enroll in school. It seemed like a pretty basic thing to require. We removed the out-of-district policy and pointed them to the appropriate board policy. To my belief that this handbook is for our current students, so why would we have an out-of-district policy in handbook? We have a clause in here that, on withdrawing from school, that if you don't check out properly, failure to do so may result in their grades and records being held until all their obligations are finalized. If you refer to Montana Code Antedited 21 to 13, we can't do that, so I struck it out of the handbook. Let me see what else here. I just changed one, smartwatches thing, to match cell phones, electronic devices for students, no smartwatches at school. Shoes in the restrooms there. And then I, for clarity's sake, placing students in classes is a pretty extensive process. And so I wanted to clarify that parent requests can come to me before the end of the school year, in case there's any special considerations that the school doesn't know about, because if we get to this time of year and I have 15 parents come in and request teachers and change, and it just creates way more chaos than, than we can really handle. And so I'd like to keep that to a minimum, and if a parent wants to change, they need to come meet with me and have a legitimate reason why. And that's the only changes in the handbook.
And I see that milk is listed in there, so I'll just.
Milk prices and everything in there.
I suppose you could take that out if it's already somewhere else, I mean, if you. I mean. Putting it in there.
I got it.
All right, FBMS student handbook.
I would stand at my computers about that, so I need to stay plugged in, it's okay. So at the beginning, of course, just the finalization of the new schedules, just if you're looking at mine, as far as the times, because that changed from the start time and then the ending time. So I changed those, and then shored up, you know, a few time things that are in there. The school staff course changes, along with all the other assignments that are listed. Took out a few things that you see, philosophies, that's changed, the vision statement, all that kind of stuff that we have been working on. Some of the curriculum, just kind of reworded some of that to put in there for the electives that the students could have. I took off the same thing with the enrollment of the out-of-district students and just referred to the board policy that's new on 3141. I feel like that's easier to, to do that. The attendance procedures and policy on 3120 and 3122P. Just kind of quoted a little bit more on that board policy that's added there on page 13. The attendance, clarified a little bit more on what absence is with the parent responsibility and the student responsibility. Talked more about the yellow slips that we have now incorporated along with our green slips. The implant absence, we also now use a stamp. We started that last year to incorporate that for students, so I just, just finalized some things like that, so it was a little bit clearer. Let's see, loss of enrollment. And I took some things out on that, since we've been working on that as a district, the things that you, the board has passed. The appeal procedure, since we don't have that public concern form, I took that out on the bottom of page 16. Attendance and extracurricular participation, those are two things that I, I dropped there, so I could clear that up a little bit more on the three or more hours of the day. So I took that out. To muddy the waters a little bit. I added, which was already part of it anyway, on hospital suspension, out of school suspension and not participating. I don't know if you can see anything as I'm going through here. I took out on the dress code, just to try to go a little bit lenient, I guess, on that. I took out the spaghetti straps, I don't think that's an issue at our school. But I did add the bags of any kind to be stored in the lockers during the day, we had some issues with that. On the cheating and plagiarism, I needed to add the AI. And then just the student conduct, added a few things here. Seeing a lot of big, different items that I did here. On the student discipline, and we'll talk about that in the discipline handbook that all the admin went through. We just clarified that on step one, step two, step three, and step four, so we had our referrals and what we needed to do there on each level, level one, two, and three. Four stayed the same. The offenses stayed the same. We added the use of alcohol sensor device in the board policy 3330. Put that in there, that hasn't been in my handbook before, but that needed to be in there this year. Of course, took out the public concerns again, and use, use the board policy 1700 on the uniform complaint procedure. Then, of course, the drug testing policy that you went through tonight, and I put that over to the side, of course, it'll be updated after tonight's board meeting, so I can go in and add, or even after the next one, since this was the first reading. So that'll need to be updated when the second reading comes through. And then, I think on the eligibility, I just took out the one portion on semester grade, if it really pertain to us, it's just final quarter grade. And I think that just some times on the tutoring. And we have the tutoring before school and tutoring after school. And of course, just striking out the grievance procedure once again. And that's it. Any questions?
I have a lot, so.
Okay, sit down.
I took out the vision statement and replaced the, with the core purpose that we went through with Deborah and changed that. Added to the policies. And I'm not quite sure why that changed the FBMS, that should say CHS, if I don't understand. Took out that public concerns resolution part and added the board policy 1700 that uniformed high school, like Felicia talked about. Sexual harassment policy, just changed that board policy number, there were a lot of numbers that had changed, so you'll see that throughout there. Attendance procedures. Most of that stays the same, that there is a sentence that says work may be required before you leave, and we actually had changed that last year, but it didn't get transferred. Students are highly encouraged to complete work before leaving. And then the next section, the make up work section, and I don't know if you want to do discussion about this, or if you want to come back to it. So the sentence that's highlighted in red is the sentence that is in there currently. At the teacher's discretion, students may be required to make up work in advance of their planned absence, so extracurricular, school-sponsored travel, doctor dinner, dental appointments, and that's to cover things where, like, they're doing tests in the classroom or things, things that the teacher doesn't want them to wait, or that they would have an unfair advantage over other students by waiting and not taking it before they leave. I looked at possibly changing that and condensing it, just making it more general, and stating that there may be circumstances where we'll, we'll be required ahead of time. And we've had quite a bit of discussion on this, but I wanted the board's input.
We should, we should probably have a motion before we discuss.
Okay, and that's, I didn't know, so we can come back to it. All right, I will keep going. Attendance policies added in the section out of the policy. Second motion. Then, under high school grad. Then under high school graduation requirements, we had a few changes in there because the financial literacy class is now a requirement. So that changes the number of elective credits required for graduation. And then just clarified a little bit about students not proficient, reuniting math may be required to take an intervention course that will count as, there will count as an elective. And placement in those intervention courses is determined by grades, test scores, and/or teacher referral. So it's not just placement on one piece of criteria, we're looking at multiple data points. On page 12, I included ingenuity under Montana Digital Academy because that is the program we actually use more than MDA. The readability is much higher. And then I added on 13, under online classes and credit recovery, these courses will only be assigned if a student is credit deficient and cannot make up a course within their daily schedule. Courses will not be assigned over the summer. And then also that those courses will count towards high school eligibility because students can't just fail a class during the school year and automatically get to make it up that summer with a course that is not the same caliber, same requirements as an in-class course. And honestly, that bit us in the tail this summer, so I learned my lesson. Clarified under fifth year program, a fifth year student who has been enrolled for eight previous semesters may not participate in athletics or activities as per MHSA policy. We changed all of our dress code and things last year, so a lot of policy numbers changed under extracurricular, co-curricular activities. So that was just clarifying. And the drug testing policy. And I did go ahead and put in the proposed policy in here, so that won't be confirmed until that second reading. But part of our issues at the high school is that we have to make sure the student handbook matches the course description book, matches the activities handbook, matches the coaches handbook. So we just tried to change everything at the same time.
Can we just refer to policy?
We've had that discussion because we would really like to convince these, and so, yes.
Maybe next year?
Yes. Yes. We talked about making a whole lot of changes for next year.
Okay.
And we changed some things, we'll see when we get to the discipline, but we, like, and that's part of the reason of doing it earlier in the year, because it's just too much to change. Clarified the ages, when they're able to participate, number of semesters. Eligibility, last year we tried to, I tried to make it easier on the teachers and hopefully make it easier on the students by doing the midterm and quarterly eligibility. Big fail, I will take responsibility for it. It didn't work. Kids put things off too long until they were in such a deep hole, they couldn't get out. And it actually, I think, ended up being harder on a lot of the teachers. So we are going back to weekly eligibility, so. And the times are in there, that the lists will be pulled and that the, like, the warning preliminary grades are again on Monday at 2 o'clock. And then when the final list will be pulled on Wednesday at noon, so. Student discipline, again, like Alicia said, I think my rubric or chart was the same, changed the board policies under search and seizure. Clarified some of that wording, and it was actually in there twice, so I just took out the second one. And also added the alcohol sensor device shoes. That was a question this year, and I didn't have anything in the handbook to back me up, so. Cell phones, you probably will feel heard something about this, and it's probably going to be controversial. Students will not have their cell phones in classrooms this share period. They will stay in their lockers. They will not be able to use them during class, in the bathroom, whatever. They can check them in the hallway during passing period. However, if that makes them tardy, that's their choice, and then it's a discipline issue, so. And we kept the same consequences in there. If they lose their cellphone, it comes to the office, their parent has to come and pick it up. They lose it a second time, they lose that privilege of bringing it for a week. Third time, they lose it for two weeks, and then it's the end of the quarter. I also put a blurb in there that currently investigating the use of cellphone bags in which students will lock their phones up during the school day. Students will be allowed access during their lunch period, purpose is to reduce the amount of screen time and increase the amount of student engagement and learning. The cellphone bags are obtained, parents and students will be notified in advance of the implementation. Parents are always able to contact the CHS office and leave a message for their student. I read a lot this summer, and just the amount of bullying, the anxiety, depression rates and everything, that they can directly link to the use of cell phones during the school day. It's, it's just frightening. So anything that's going to increase student engagement, student learning, I think this is a win-win. And enrollment out of district students, I did take that out, and I said, please see board policy. So I listed the policy. And last page was the student handbook, current sign up sheet, just added the section about eligibility and the cellphone and technology use. Those weren't in there, so. That's a lot.
Hey, Robin, I had one, one question. I didn't know, and I, I put the question on the Google Doc, but anyways, under, under bereavement, I, and I believe it's on page nine, do we need to add child into that list of bereavement?
And I, I did see that you put that, and I was going to bring that up when we were discussing, so.
Okay, that's fine, that, we can do that then.
So, okay, we'll talk about that when we get there. All right, course description book, most of this wasn't a lot of changes, but more cleaning up, clarifying, again, with the requirement for the personal finance or financial literacy class. Tracking the subject. And we added, actually, number two, under lititorian selection class process, that should have come off, a course of study that includes three honors courses. That was supposed to be deleted, I'm not sure why it didn't show up. And then we added a third bullet down at the bottom that said, number of honors course completion will break ties. So in the instance, there was a tie, and we would look at that. The next pages, we had to, last year, we had to combine agad and industrial arts because our teacher was able to teach both of those. Thankfully, this year, we were able to get an industrial arts teacher, and we are so excited about that. So I separated those back out and added those descriptions, clarified some things under science. We had to change from honors to advanced because it won't be a dual credit due to certification. And then moved computer education, the personal finance over under core class or required class. And then again, just separated out industrial arts and. Added in some descriptions that were missing for some reason for office classes and personal finance. Cleaned up, Jen knows a lot of help with this, cleaned up the materials requirement for students so that they're helping pay for, supply some materials. Added the description for music appreciation and environmental science and history of the American West. And German, too, does have referred to an exquisite German one. And again, the same thing, and here again, is that duplication. If we could reduce that, it would be great. The online classes will only be assigned if a student's credit deficient, cannot make up a course within their daily schedule, and courses will not be assigned over the summer. And that would be unless there's mitigating circumstances, I think, for some reason, a health issue or something. And we took out the 940 SAT score. On the new NAIA eligibility requirements, Mrs. Davenport didn't feel that was appropriate. And clarified just the list of classes that are approved but not being taught. Most of the due process things are the same. We did clarify some language previously, it referred to school authorities, and so we just ensured that that all matched. The alcohol sensor devices and. Clarified the language under plagiarism to add, that includes the use of artificial intelligence. And just as an aside, that's been the issue with that online class this summer because not only do I have to check their work, I have to run it through a plagiarism scam, scam, not scam, it is scam, and the AI scan, and then reassign it, and they're way just worse. So clarified just the language under inappropriate or public disclosure of affection because it was in two different places, which I'll check out on the next page. And then on page 18, that's where we did a lot of cutting because a lot of that was in our handbooks, we felt like, so. We took that out. Left all of the gambling and all of that. Added attendance and truancy, put that together, and then included the policy numbers. Corrected the compulsory education statement because it's now seven to 16 years of age or completion of the eighth grade. Took out all of the high school and elementary, middle school information and just clarified that truancy information, so it went under attendance. Disciplinary action, we took out a lot of the extra. Added the policy number. Clarified the assistance on in-school suspension because they do not have a ISSA available, it's staff is available. Clarified out of school suspension, our responsibility, their responsibility. Under conduct and consequences on page 35, again, we took out all of that referring to levels because most of that is in that rubric. And just under the consequence chart, condensed that and made it pretty basic. Schools are responsible for keeping order during the school day, add activities to improve school. Administration has a responsibility to determine the best way to run about the desired changes to be taken. So that chart is now in each of our handbooks, and then the discipline of special education students and their rights is out to admin.
Emergency response, didn't see.
No, we need, gonna cut crisis goal and just add my name to where there's other superintendent names and phone numbers. Other than that, it's it, same.
And. For special in handbook, so I updated the dates. There was a lot of references to attachments in the document, and so anywhere there was an attachment noted, I deleted all of those because there are no attachments. Page five, I updated verbiage on child count because we have to report to the state any student who receives special education services, so that is done to make that align. On page six, I updated the guidance for. The procedural safeguards now guide all of special education, and it's not separate handbooks for each item that's listed in here, so you'll see IDEA, special education part B, procedural safeguards notice, and that is a beautiful document. If you want to have light reading material, I'll give it to you, 21 pages of life-size by font. For parents to follow in all of our rules versus like a whole bunch of different manuals that we have. On page seven, I just made kindergarten, be kindergarten all the way through there. And then academic, I did update and change, we will do the Montana science assessment related to the Mont Cass, that's very old. And then smarter balance is no longer being used, three through eight, it will now be the Montana aligned standards throughout, through year assessment or MAST. So much easier for all of us to understand. There was a hyphen, I'm not sure it was supposed to be there, so I deleted that on page seven. And then child count is no longer done October 1st, so I just left it as child count because it's the first Monday in October now, but the state will probably change it, who knows? They like to change things. On page nine, I did say the referral, I took out the limit of third quarter. It is nice to have all of those done, referrals received by third quarter, but technically we can't deny anybody the right to have their child referred, even if they can't the last week of school to ask us. So I just deleted that. And then on page 10, I did lay off the timeline, this was a recommendation when Brittany submitted paperwork last year, and we had to spell out that evaluations, you have 30 days from, or 60 days from the time that we receive permission to evaluate a kid to have an evaluation report meeting to talk about if the kid qualifies for special ed. So just clarified that process and then deleted any attachment in all of the other plans that are very old. Transfer students took out reference to a manual we no longer have. And then page 12, did a lot of deletions to those other manuals we no longer have. And then also on page 13, did the same thing. Then moving on to 504. The dates are updated, and then on pages two and 13, I updated it so it was my contact information and not Monty's. So, and that was all I changed on the 504 handbook. On preschool, I updated the core purpose and the dates as well. On page eight, I did change that there was a child find referral plan, that it was deleted and put IDEA, procedural safeguards. And then the evaluation report on page nine, I just referenced the 60-day timeline as well. And then students who have developmental delay have up until ninth, or nine years of age to have that label now. It used to be six, I don't know when it changed, but it's now through age nine, so they can have it from age three through eight before we have to give them a different identifying disability. And then on page 10, I updated the brochure that we use. Busing, I updated it to the correct extension since Mr. DeSoul is now in charge of busing and not central office. And then parent resources on page 11, those are old contact information. And then out of district enrollment, I just put see the board policy.
All right, I think we should approve each one of these individually, just because then we can have discussion on them if needed without.
Okay.
Going in different directions, so.
Okay. I move the Colster Public Schools Board of Trustees approves PBES student handbook for the 2425 school year as presented.
All right, any public comment on the PBES student handbook? Any board comment? Wade?
Hi.
Okay, number two.
I move the Colster Public Schools Board of Trustees approves the FBMS student handbook for 2425 school year as presented.
Any public comments on this? FBMS handbook.
I have a question, sorry. On the meal prices, going back to my view, sorry, I was not paying attention. Do you guys want those to just stay, update? I think those need to be updated.
Yeah, they'll need to be updated.
Okay. So we'll.
It's just the extra milk on that one, I think.
Yeah, I think they had it spelled out, so.
Okay.
Because that'll be the second reading, but school will have started, so. Okay.
Well, the charges weren't a policy, right? We just set them, so there's no second reading.
Yeah, that's right. Yep.
Dan?
Yeah, dress code, so the spaghetti straps. So you don't have it, that there's not a problem with spaghetti straps at the middle school or the. So you don't have it, that there's not a problem with spaghetti straps at the middle school or the girls just go through?
Well, there's not a twofold, there's not a problem with the spaghetti straps. And it's already covered on here too, um, inside of that. What I have on there is that your undergarbage should not be showing through. So there's so many new things out for girls to be able to, um, not have their undergarbage show through, that it doesn't become a problem anymore.
Any more comment? Hey, Wade?
Hi.
Angie?
Hi.
Hi.
All right, number three.
I move the Colchester Public Schools Board of Trustees approves CHS student handbook for the twenty-four, twenty-five school year as presented.
We need to choose options on this one. Oh, do we need to choose options, sorry? Yes. But can we do that based on discussion? I think. When we do policies that there's options to choose, we can have discussion on that because we need to know what we're going to make the motion on, so. Your options were on page seven?
Let's work backward, on, on page nine, I guess, um, that some bullet point two at the top. It's an exemption, um, for attendance. Where their absence would be exempted. And number two is serious illness or death of an immediate, uh, family member. And it's always included mother, father, brother, sister, aunt, uncle, grandparent. And Wade had made the suggestion of including child. Which makes sense because we have had some team members.
Yeah.
If you're okay with that, I will add that. No, that was a good catch, Wade, thank you.
Is that the only option now, Angie, there's an option on page seven about makeup work? So makeup work is the responsibility of the student. So what is, you want to get rid of the red?
Well, the red is what it is.
Okay.
My proposal, if, if wanted, would make it a little more general, um, generic, would mean to do the blue.
Because what is the consequence if you don't do it? We have it stated in there, but what's the consequence? Like, I think the blue is a little bit, there may be, right? As a, because do all teachers require it? I mean, it says teacher discretion, but what is the consequence if I don't do it? So I think if you leave that a little bit more vague, then that'd be more teacher-directed for the consequence. So we want to change it from, at the teacher discretion, students may be required to make up work in advance of their planned absence. Examples extracurricular or school-sponsored travel, dental doctor. Appointments, driver's licensing. Two, there may be circumstances where work will be required ahead of time. Okay, and then the next one says. Okay, student work may be due prior to leaving or upon return at the teacher's discretion. Change that to, there may be circumstances where work will be required ahead of time.
Yes.
So it basically says the same thing, just. Nice, yeah, okay. So. Okay, Britt.
No.
Nobody seconded you, you're fine.
Yeah.
Oh, I didn't have a second.
I stopped you, I stopped you, yeah.
All right. Okay. I move the Colchester Public Schools Board of Trustees approves CHS student handbook for twenty-four, twenty-five school year. With recommended changes. Okay. Second.
Okay, any public comment on the CHS student handbook? Diane?
I've got a couple. I'll stand up for you. I, I couldn't access online with the, and the board talks, I don't, maybe I can't because of.
No, you can now, that was fixed, I brought that.
Great, so I'm working on the old document, so in case I make a mistake, that's what I'm working on. So, um, I've been a part of high school athletics since two thousand and four without missing a year, either having a husband coach or kids being in high school sports, starting with Melissa and JC. So I have polar into the spectrum children. So, um, what I have found over the years is that the majority of the teachers have been very understanding, very easy to work with when you have multiple rescheduling during basketball season. I don't see it in any other sport besides basketball or wrestling due to weather. And sometimes three and four games in one week and sometimes right before district. And what that has done to our boys' basketball program has been devastating. We've had some of our best students who typically are core playing of students be ineligible. We've also had some who are pushing the line, that's just how they are. Um, so one of the, one of the concerns I have is that some of the, in the past, instead of SS being inputted into whatever the, is it infinite campus, Robin?
Yes.
Okay, instead of SS, teachers would input a zero. For a school-sponsored activity, which should not happen, it should be SS. And also, um, that way it doesn't have a numerical value when you tabulate that student's grade because the student typically has the opportunity to have this, the work turned in the next day when they come back from an activity. Because this is, you know, dealing with year away activities. And so, um, so if you could put in SS, the teachers may, they may not input a zero. Because some teachers have done that, they will input the zero and that should not happen for a school-sponsored activity. And then secondly, um, we, um. I encourage you to consider that, um. We don't want to discriminate against our students who are in school-sponsored activities. So if you, in the past, it's been that the makeup work is required before they leave with, with some of our classes. Which is not required for excused absences or bereavement or what have you. And I just think that if you are going to have your students in school-sponsored activities have their work made up before they go on a trip. You also need to have your excused absence, students have the same requirement. Otherwise, I think you need to make it more general and say students' work is due when they return. And teachers may not input a zero, they may input an SS, I think you need to make that clear that they may not input a zero. Okay, thank you.
Can I ask a couple of follow-up questions? Does the handbook touch on how teachers use entry campus?
Yes, actually it does, um, so let me clarify. On what the sentence did say previously, it said examples were extracurricular or school-sponsored travel. Dental doctor appointments, driver's licensing, so it was other activities also. And then SS is not an option for them to enter, is that correct?
Not teachers, no.
Okay, so, but, so what we have in here, it says makeup work or an excused exempt or unexcused absence is rated full value if turned in within two days from the day of first return. From the first day of an absence with one additional day for each consecutive. And that will address absences in excess of five consecutive days on an individual basis, so we tried to cover like FFA going to national convention or, um, FCC LA traveling. And then we also have in there, uh, teachers, students are encouraged to work with the teachers to make arrangements to address special circumstances or challenges. Teachers will work with students to help them be successful. While it is highly encouraged that students complete all assignments before leaving for a school-sponsored activity. Assignments missing for school-sponsored activities or events will not be flagged as missing in order to prevent the grade pulling as a zero. The flag can be changed to missing after two days. So they do have that two-day window to get things turned in.
So it says missing, but it doesn't say it won't be put in as a zero.
Right, well, if, if they flag it as missing, it pulls as a zero.
Right, but I remember watching my daughter play softball.
Okay.
She just finished batting, I get a notification on my phone that she just failed a quiz.
Okay.
And a zero was put in, so I totally agree with that and then it causes so much anxiety for the kids because after the game they look at their phone, they failed a quiz.
Yeah, and Diane actually helped with that language and so they are not supposed to flag them as missing. But if they do, it is going as a zero, so that's something I'll address.
Well, that went in as a zero, not missing.
But missing goes as a zero.
Right, missing is a zero, that was the problem.
Go to a zero, so I just need to clarify that with staff when we, so that we're not doing that. And I know, like, I understand, we know how many students they have, we know how busy they are. And I know that sometimes they put that in as a placeholder because if a student sees that, sometimes for them it's a reminder, I mean, they honestly might have forgotten to say, oh my gosh, you know, this zero just popped up or this missing just popped up. I've got to get in to get that done, so, you know, I understand that part of it, but I also, we don't want to penalize kids. We want kids involved in activities, we want kids involved in athletics, so.
So if there's just a different.
Is there a different one?
Thing that can be put in that doesn't pull as a zero, that would be beneficial.
And is there a way to have it sewn?
Well, so at the middle school, we use L for late. And if that doesn't flag it as a zero, right, then that gives heads up to students if they're looking at their grades, it gives heads up to the teachers. You can also schedule your calendar, that would come up, um, this is what I've been working on a lot with the teachers at the middle school. This is set their calendar to show, you know, like, two days from now to be collecting that. So you can use the L instead of the N for missing. You can put, actually you can put the assignment that's due for those individuals that are out on sport, due two days later, then you have the whole class due if need be.
So, yeah, but instead of having to redo your whole calendar, you just.
It's just the assignment.
It's just an assignment.
It's just the assignment itself and that's the one that's affected and that's the due date that they just changed, so.
Because I'll tell you what, infinite campus is an emotional roller coaster. It is devastating sometimes.
And honestly, I would like to take a whole lot of this language out. Because it backs us into a corner, so it would be. And it's a work in progress, I mean, teachers have had input on this and, um, I think we need to work on it some more. But I can add the L, maybe instead of the flag can be changed to late after two days, so it shows that.
I started putting in the initials A V on the date that they're gone. Because when you have ninety-seven students, it's hard to remember who was gone, it doesn't, it doesn't count coming into their grade.
With A V, nothing to.
A parent called me one day and go, why is there A D? And, you know, and I said, well, they were gone for sports, and they're like, oh, that's great, now I know my kids, you know, what classes they missed when they leave halfway through the day.
They could, yes.
It worked for me, I don't know if it's going to work for everybody else, but it holds the same.
I think a uniform language would be nice too, so everybody's using the same thing. But I thought the teachers couldn't put in SS.
They can put whatever letter they want to, it will not calculate the grade in that box. So like when the, when the secretary uses it for school-sponsored events, it pulls just, what she's saying is that it just pulls for attendance only. Correct, but what Diana's saying is that when you go into infinite campus as a teacher, I can put whatever I want in there. I can put A D, I can put SS, you know, so I agree with Angie that that would be a lot easier because this, this is a non-stop.
Yeah.
You know, conversation piece, I'll use those words, um, you know, from admin to teachers, to teachers, to parents, to coaches. I mean, I, I would agree that we need to shore that up and if we're being consistent, you know, with what the district is wanting, that the secretaries do for a school-sponsored event. I think that maybe the teachers then could use the SS and that would just shore it up like, oh, hey, Johnny was in school-sponsored event, whether, whatever it is. You know, whether it's a hope, whether it's a thing, basketball.
Right, because I.
I do like that suggestion and that would give, um, me a good place to, to do that instead of having to put in an L for late.
So try and vary on that, Diana, could you, I mean, it's not doable to put in the SS.
I think so, I also do comments, you do statements, comments, Robin, where I say student absent on this day.
Yeah.
And then they haven't told us today to get it done and they don't, it goes missing, must be turned in by this day, but then it's a paragraph of. Here's the dates that you've missed, right, it's really nice when the students come in and say, well, I never got that, I can be like, I talked to you on this day. Put in all these dates and then we can, you know, we per the infinite campus comment and then I just copy the comment. But that's a lot of work for everyone.
It is, but it really helps me, you know, too, when the miracle's, I think, so now wait a minute, this is what it shows. Like, Chris, I know you're past the number, but would that help you guys if it's not pulling as a zero?
It would have been a huge help.
No, that's exactly what I was thinking of.
Yeah, and I think that can be in there for whoever is absent because I don't know until later if it was an excuse or a zero. And I have two grades per day in my class. So, you know, I need to know, do they need to go do, uh, redo a lab or did they lose like their activity points? You know, and they have options to make those up and they know what they're supposed to do, but I can't be chasing after them, hey, get me your paragraph, you know? I think the accountability has to be put back on the student.
Just keep in mind too, that once you put those letters in the box, that's totally fine, but if you click on the missing flag, it will still count it as a zero. So.
They don't go hand in hand.
They're just clicking complete and then it doesn't, it doesn't factor it, but you know that it's not that.
Because they just use differently.
They have, yeah, incompletes typically have a different ramification as far as how long you have to make it up and.
Right.
What the reason is and it's.
Can we come up with a, a language that everyone can use? And I think that's got to be. Yeah, one can't just be doing incomplete, one do an absent, one do it, yeah.
I know, too, like a complete, but I think Diana had a good point, like she might not know who's at a school-sponsored activity, so I think if they were to enter the A D for absent, then.
Well, post-renter, that's also a simple.
Trey?
Um, if that's the case, then we are going something like that, then that needs to be able to pull on the ad hoc for missing assignments, even though they're not technically exist. Because half the time the kids don't even know what they need to do when they come back. Being an advisory teacher, I need to be able to go through and give them the list of stuff that they need to do and say, all right, Jim, I think this is what you gotta go through, this is what you gotta get done, let's get it done. So if we are going to do that, then we need to make sure that at least on the infinite campus end, and I'm going to say this out loud, is a pain in the backside. To go through and to work with this system. I'd rather go through and bash my head against the wall.
I think you guys think that, we'll, we'll go for it.
That needs to be, that is going to do that.
Or they can pull their own, they just, I don't know what they're. We'll get it figured out.
Yeah, it's frustrating.
So teachers, they enter A D to hold that spot, or teachers will enter?
I said will enter, I would like that.
Will enter, yes.
And then it becomes missing after two days, right?
Or any other?
Put an A D.
And then you're going to go, you miss it, then you're going to go in, so, there's got to be a better way. I don't know either, that just seems like a lot of extra work for you guys.
Well, if there's a hole, there's a hole.
Yeah.
I mean, there's no grade, so then it doesn't pull negative or positive.
But then they gotta go in and put that missing back in in two days?
Well, if they turn it in. If they turn it in. If they turn, I mean, you know, I mean, that's just a.
Yeah. And students have to take that green slip around before they're allowed to leave and everything they have to do is written on there, should be, I mean. So I feel like there is that double check already.
But we have to figure out how to get the green slips right in the kids' hands and then.
Right, take a picture.
Yeah, all right, yeah. I just took that away, so, I mean, we can take a photo copy if they come in and make caring.
Well, we talked about, um, like, if they bring their green slip to the office, I think somebody check it off, like, oh, Bobby got his, Devon got his, Tris has got hers. And I just checked them off and they were complete and then you take that paper because when I collect those papers, now I know what you need to do and you have no idea.
And then we don't have that stack of papers that we're trying to manage. So we could just do checklists.
Give people a batch of this. Yeah, as a parent, you know, I'll pull that early, you have to sign up for the, you know, whatever, and then as they come up, we're just checking off. See, she checks it off, checks her name off and hands it back.
Yeah.
Otherwise, we don't know what to do.
Yeah. Will that help? And we have a Mustang coin too. We're bright, honey.
We just don't let it be the best if they don't.
It's a little bit different.
Okay, so, the green slip is just a process that I think needs to be worked through during school. But I don't know if we want to add that to the handbook with the, with the letters. I'm not certain. Is that a process you guys would train on at the beginning of the year?
I think so.
Do you want it in your handbooks?
Uh, to me, it's the essence of what you. Uh, to me, it's the essence of what you're doing, maybe not so much all of the nitty-gritty, um, in the handbook right now. I mean, I think the point is that you don't want, you don't want to count against kids when they're gone. You're going to give them two days, and then, so they don't get a zero, which I completely agree with. I mean, you should just leave a blank, and teachers see that it's an excused absence for whatever reason. I don't understand all of the processes, but I think once that point's made, and then the teachers can work out which systems work best. What, you put it in for the campus, then you can define that with them. Once you write it in here, then you change it. I think the point really is just that it's.
Yeah, I don't.
Everybody's agreeing that you don't want to count against the kiddo, and all, now we have to just get the system for the teachers that works best.
So we don't want to say we'll put A D, right?
Just will not put an M or a zero, I think is what we needed to say.
Yeah.
Yeah, because they get the teachers back together. I've heard different comments, advisor, I've been through all of this. You know, they have to agree and know together how they're going to do it. So, I don't know, I would leave it to them for that piece.
Yeah.
So just leave that since what it was, that will not be flagged as missing or prevent the grade pulling as a zero. Flag can be changed to missing after two days. And then I can rest that.
Yeah, yeah, and then you work out for the teachers.
Your building.
You need to make clear for the kids and parents at some point, but we don't know what that is right now.
And we always keep that caveat in there that, you know, it's that administrator discretion. If I have a student who has been gone for, you know, whatever number of days, and they haven't had a chance to make up work, or there's only been two assignments over a one-week period, they haven't had a chance to increase their grade. And we, we deal with those situations, so.
This isn't like a faculty handbook telling them, directing them how to do their procedures. It's for the parents and the kiddos to know, this isn't going to count against them. How, what you expect of them, and how they're going to do with the teachers, and you can work that out.
What page is that on, Robin?
Yeah, I didn't know a page was.
Seven.
I was skipping around.
Yeah, I missed that.
Okay, where is the part where it's, oh, right there, okay. Teachers will work with students to help them be successful. While it is highly encouraged that students complete all assignments before leaving for a school-sponsored activity, assignments missing for school-sponsored activity or events will not be flagged as missing in order to prevent the grade from pulling as a zero. Flags can be changed to missing after two days. Okay, so it already says that, we just need to make sure it's happening.
Right.
Yeah.
Yes.
Okay. Okay.
Sounds good then.
All right.
I like it.
Good.
Okay.
All right, so I had, I do not have a motion, right?
Yeah, I do.
Yeah, we did do, and that's it.
Mm-hmm.
Okay. Any more board comment?
One more public comment?
Sure.
Thank you, thank you, thank you as a mom for that, but also for considering removing cell phones from all classrooms.
Yes.
That is huge. Um, it's huge when you get into the professional life and you are dealing with employees who don't know how to put a device away. The amount of waste, it takes one glance, and that person is off topic for the next fifteen minutes. And it is very highly studied, and so thank you. I appreciate it a lot.
Thank you.
Can I piggyback off of that real quick? Uh, for your first name.
Joanie.
Joanie?
Joanie.
Julie, okay, I remember that now. Yeah, right in here.
Sorry.
Yeah, no, I'm getting tired. Julie, no, that's exactly how I approached it for years, was we're preparing you for the workplace, we're preparing you for your future, and then we would bring in those expectations to show them what that meant, and what you need to do from sometimes dress, but also the electronics. So that was dynamite. So, parents, students, when they start, you know, have an issue with that, with that. So we'd always fall back on too. So thank you.
Okay, last comment, Trey.
Did we clarify, uh, teacher discretion on whether it's worth just to be done before or after?
It says maybe.
Maybe required.
Yeah. Yep. Okay, any more board comment? Okay, Wade? Wade?
Hi. I'm still here, I'm, I'm listening, I, I thought, I thought it was great, the, the whole conversation, so I didn't want to butt in, so.
Yes, number four.
No, okay, four, yeah. I move the Culture of Public Schools Board of Trustees approves CHS Course Description Handbook for the twenty-four, twenty-five school year as presented.
Okay. Okay, any public comment on Course Description Handbook? Any board comment? Okay, Angie.
Aye. Aye.
Wade?
Aye.
Aye. I move the Culture of Public Schools Board of Trustees approves Appendix A Discipline Handbook for the twenty-four, twenty-five school year as presented.
Okay. Any public comment? Board comment? Angie?
Aye. Aye.
Wade?
Aye.
Aye. I move the Culture of Public Schools Board of Trustees approves Appendix G Emergency Response and Safety Plan Handbook for the twenty-four, twenty-five school year as presented.
Any public comment? Board comment? Wade?
Aye.
Tiffany?
Aye.
Angie?
Aye.
Aye.
I appreciate that we're getting rid of this school.
I move the Culture of Public Schools Board of Trustees approves Appendix H District Programs Special Education, Section five oh four, Preschool Special Education Handbook for the twenty-four, twenty-five school year as presented.
Any public comment? Board comment? Tiffany?
Aye.
Angie?
Aye.
Wade?
Aye.
Aye.
Okay, nine fourteen, Utilized Funds in the Interlocal to Health Insurance Fund. Brittany?
Kiki Doki. So our, um, Health Insurance Fund has kind of just been going steadily down. We found some errors with, um, EBMS as well, where when health insurance comes out, it comes out of the general fund. I deposited into the Fund two ninety, and then expenditures are paid out of that two ninety. And so our two ninety has just been slowly kind of going down a little bit. And so we were able to use, some of, you guys will see later, there's an operating transfer done. Um, and we were able to use that, which essentially those funds, those health insurance funds would have been pulled from the general fund anyway. So, um, we just, I'm asking to use those from the interlocal fund to the health insurance fund. And that will bring it up to about a fifty thousand dollar balance, so. I move the Culture of Public Schools Board of Trustees approves a transfer of a hundred, four thousand, six hundred, seventy-two dollars and eighty-four cents from the interlocal fund to the health insurance fund.
Okay. Any public comment? Board comment? Angie?
Aye.
Tiffany?
Aye.
Wade?
Aye.
Aye.
So I thought.
Okay. Report.
That's why, that's why it's fun hearing.
Does anyone need a cookie? Yeah, take a break.
Yeah, I do.
Do we need to slide break?
Yeah.
Okay, we'll take a short recess.
Oh.
I know it was a lot.
Yeah, no, you don't have to worry about that.
Yes, I love your. You can't even time.
There's, there's not a competition here. We'll get that out.
Thank you. I have a few who would like to see some.
Yeah, I'm gonna look at the answer, I feel like. Yeah, I never really looked at the answer.
Thanks for that.
Okay, Brittany, you're up.
Okay. So, great budget, you know, time. I've included in the board packet the trustee's financial summary.
Sorry.
So this is basically everything that we did last year. Um, and you have the elementary and the high school. And so this is what the auditors will come in and look at most. So whatever I've been reporting to the state over the last five weeks of, you know, time, is all included in here. And so, um, there isn't really anything in here that I felt like was way off from last year. It's, I love these because it will compare with the previous year. And it'll give you an idea of like, you know, if we had a hundred thousand more in expenditures in one fund, where did it come from and why? And it breaks it all down between salaries, benefits, it breaks it down between, I mean, maintenance, transportation. Um, each page is a different fund. When you get, when you get past the first few balance sheets. Um, so like I said, there's nothing really in there that I felt like I really felt like I needed to explain. Um, if there's anything in there on either one of those that you guys have noticed, or, um, these aren't approved by the board. These are given to you, um, answered to the auditor on those. So these aren't really what you guys are like taking action on tonight, it'll be the budgets. But this is a really good idea of where the money went. And, um, every money, every penny is counted for in there. Till audit time, and they come and tell me different, but, just kidding. Um, so then next, I've included your budget reports. And those are really boring to me, they, they don't really tell you a whole lot. So I did this presentation that I will show you guys, and then for you, uh, board. And then for you board members, I gave you a packet if you want to follow along. And for anybody else in the room, there's some on the ledge back there of the TFS is the budget. The presentation is all back there too. So let me just get on with it. So I was told the budget would balance itself. Somebody lied to me because that's not true. This is a timeline of what I've been going through. And so if you have gotten no answers to your emails or anything like that, this is what I've been doing nonstop. So June thirtieth is opposed of the fiscal year before. July first and August tenth, I did the budget meeting notice. We don't even get final cash balances from the county until July twentieth. And so by then I'm able to kind of figure out where we ended up last year. And then we don't get our taxable evaluation until the first Monday in August. And that really is what set your budget. And then by August fifteenth, I have to submit it to the county superintendent. And then no later than August twenty-fifth, the trustees adopt the final of the budget. So if there's something that's not agreed upon today and you guys still need more information or research or things like that, we can extend the budget portion and have another meeting if you'd like. Oh, so I missed one, did we? Oh, no. So the types of funds, I'll just go over this real quick. You guys are pretty familiar with this, but budgeted funds have a tax impact on the district. So they also have specific uses, uses. So you can't use transportation funds to do something in adult education or vice versa, unless it makes sense. If we were, you know, using school resources to bus people to adult ed or something. But, so they each have their own individual uses. You can't just use money for whatever. So although it may look like one fund has some money in it, doesn't mean I can use it to fund something else. So all the things on the right are non-budgeted funds. And so those are not approved by the board. But you guys approve the expenditures that go through every month on the board packets. This is not line item budgeting also. So when we talk about that, that gets set after this budget is set. Then I go in and line item budget and how much should we spend on this? How much should be spent on here? But you guys are setting the budget amount. Next is just a diagram to show you how the base budget is funded. I think you guys are getting pretty good at this. Basically, you get forty-four point seven percent of the district, for the district's basic entitlement, your current A and B entitlement, and so on. And so we're not, we're not fulfilling the max that we can, which the voters were generous to vote on this year. And then our next slide will show you kind of what the difference is there. So your base is eighty percent of your current A and B, eighty percent of your basic entitlement, forty percent of your special ed allowable cost funding. And then when we do adopt the maximum budget that the taxpayers voted on, we end up getting a hundred percent. So to achieve that budget, the district must obtain voter approval. And we can never go below the minimum base budget. Because that's what the state is telling you what it would cost to run your, run your district in the general fund. And we also just want to keep budget authority. So when the taxpayers do vote on that, we're able to keep that. A and B versus enrollment, for anyone that doesn't know, enrollment is your actual count of students. We report to OPI two times a year, first Monday in October and February. Your A and B is what is calculated for our budget. Your A and B is your total of two count days divided by two, multiply by your days, your PIR days, and divide by a hundred and thirty. You'll take your current year or your three-year average use, whichever is higher. This year, Marie, they calculated that we would use our three-year average. Our taxable value went up. Doesn't sound like a lot, but I'm super excited about that. It went up a hundred ninety-nine thousand five hundred fifty-seven from FY twenty-four. Kind of explains what your taxable value of the district is assigned to value of property within the district's boundaries. One mil is one thousandth of a dollar. The value of a mil, point zero zero one, times the taxable value of the district. The district with a taxable value of one million will raise one thousand for every mil levied. And then next is our ten-year taxable valuation. So you can see we've been like declining since FY nineteen. And declining a lot. You can see that that was eighty-five million at one point. And we're down to, what was that, forty-six? Forty-one, forty-one. So to be up even a little bit this year, we're going to take that as a win. Because it's been on a steady decline. When your parents ask where all your money went? Here you go. So this shows where the elementary general fund is spent. We have salaries and benefits are at seventy-two point five, which is still pretty good, you know? We'll see an uptick with that next year with negotiations happening last year, or I mean this year. Negotiations happened last year, but this year, okay? When I showed my husband this, actually, he was like, well, what is other purchase services? And what is, you know, professional technical? So I just kind of outlined it a little bit on the bottom. So other purchase services are field trips, property and liability insurance. And everyone knows our property and liability insurance is really high right now. So that's what takes the majority of that little piece of pie right there. Mileage for professional development or anytime there's mileage out of the district. Professional technical services are psychologists, speech and language pathologists, legal services, our pre-employment tests, which include our background checks or drug tests, any of those. And then the operating reserve that is that health insurance fund transfer that I mentioned earlier. And it helps to aid the district as a whole. So although we might look like we're two different funds, we're still benefiting the whole district. The high school general fund, basically, basically the same. Maybe instead of field trips, they're doing job fairs. And the rest is, you guys know pretty well, our split is thirty, thirty, forty. So they have a lot of the same expenditures we have. Their salaries and benefits are very similar to elementary as well. And then looking ahead, we have had a steady enrollment decline. I don't, not, not bad, but I do think this year, I don't have steady numbers, of course, right now because of kindergarten and new people coming in. I don't have those numbers to tell you on what our enrollment's going to look like this year. We passed the voted levies, so that's awesome. We're no longer receiving COVID funds. The good thing about this district is that I feel like we managed it really well with, you know, you guys doing the stipends and things like that. We didn't earmark it for salaries and things that we'd now have to take back out of the general fund. So I don't think that we'll see too big of an impact this year. We did use it for some technology things in the past is probably one of the bigger things besides the stipends. So technology will have to pick up a little bit more of that. Just on the horizon is the track of football field. That's a big hot topic right now. Kindu playground has been talked about as well. Technology fund, security cameras. There are some dead spots that need to be addressed and just some places where there aren't cameras that we are going to bring to you guys to get some more security cameras around the barn up there and things like that. There's some doors that need addressing as far as bobbing and the internet firewall. Are just some things that are on the horizon. The adult ed fund, there's the locker room that is on the deferred maintenance list. And also their HVAC system. And you can use the adult ed funds for that because they have swimming lessons in there. So most of the time we do kind of a split between Impact Aid and adult ed, depending on where our funds are at. The building reserve fund, this I'll talk, talk about in a minute. But we're just preparing to address the deferred maintenance needs that are on that list. And then the transportation fund, there was a big mileage reduction this year compared to last year. Probably about two hundred and, I think, can't remember the number, two hundred and forty miles less than the previous year, which hopefully will offset our expenditures and we're not, we won't see that big of a hit. But it's kind of a known, unknown right now with the transportation routes. This is a comparison for the budget, sorry, that's blurry. If you need to look at your neighbors, look at your neighbors. So on the elementary ballot, the voters agreed to fund the overbase nine point nine two mils. So when you see that, I can read my own computer, eighteen point two six. Here we go, I got it. Oh, I was off, nineteen point four eight. Then, oh, sorry. Nineteen point four eight. You'll subtract that nine point nine two that we told the taxpayers we were going to use the non-levee revenue first. So that would leave the budgeted mils at nine point five six. And same with the high school. So on here, the funds that we did levy in is the transportation, one point five one. And we have technology at one point eight zero mils and the building reserve. So the building reserve is, you can either vote for a building reserve levy and you can take it to your taxpayers. I did look at the history and the history, we have done it multiple times in this district. One time for like one point five million over like five years. And so they have done that to get some things done. That's something that you guys would definitely have to talk about. But the thing that we can do permissively is to take the max that they will allow us, which in the elementary was forty-nine thousand nine hundred six dollars and seventy-eight cents, and use that for any building needs that you have. So that deferred maintenance list, you know, you guys can kind of keep that in mind that this is money that can be earmarked for some of those things. Also in the high school. In the high school, on the ballot, the voters voted for three point two six mils. And so subtracted from the thirteen point four seven left us with ten point two one. So we will use the non-levee revenue first before the taxpayers are taxed for that full amount. And then transportation was just a small amount, point nine six. Bus depreciation reserve, we're looking at replacing, you know, the buses are on a rotation. So we'll look at, Robert said, not this year, but next year. And so the high school is just a little bit lower than it usually is. So that's just a small amount in there. And then adult ed, you'll see that one point three four, and that's to address, it's about fifty-five thousand. And so that will address, the locker room was about fifty thousand on the deferred maintenance list. And then technology at one point two zero. Something to know about technology is the only money we get in for technology is like a twenty-five hundred dollar state aid payment that is based off of. Is that based off of? It's based off of timber harvest on trust lands when the harvest exceeds a certain threshold. I didn't know that, so I had to look it up and then write it down. So that can vary year to year, obviously. And so that is the only money we have coming in. So if we levy a little bit in there, we also get cold proceeds. So the way cold proceeds work is that we get a certain amount based on production. And then we can only put those proceeds back into a fund that we levied the previous year. So if we didn't levy in anything, all of that money would go into general fund. And so it is a good, good idea to have a little bit being pulled out of there. Because then technology, although it's a small amount, levy to taxpayers, we can also put that much in from cold proceeds. So that's definitely helpful in the tech fund where we're not getting any support. The building reserve for the high school as well is not as much as the elementary, but it's twenty-seven thousand two hundred and fifty-four dollars that we can permissively levy. And I did the max amount that, that we were able to do there. Next, COVID funds, I just wanted to give an update on that. We have spent SR one, SR two, SR three, lost instructional time is all spent out. The only thing remaining in SR three base is four percent of it. And it's the amount of a TRS error that we had when we gave a stipend and TRS was paid and then we had to credit it back. So I'm waiting to find out if that's cleared up. If it's not, then we have about thirty thousand that you guys can earmark for something before September thirtieth. And then, this coffee is broken, I'm still tired. And I am still tired. So any questions? I know that's kind of fast, I know it's furious, but that's, that's how everybody likes it, right? Short, sweet. So have you.
I have, I have one question. If, if we permissively levy, is there a timeframe in which we have to use that, those funds?
In, in which one?
I mean, if, if we permissively levy, let's say in, in building reserve, is, does that, do those funds have to be used within the, that fiscal year? Or is that something that, okay, that's what I was, I was curious about, okay?
But some funds do.
Some funds do?
Like, like the general fund.
Yeah.
Okay, okay.
Yeah. General fund cannot. No, that's the only one, no.
Okay.
Yeah. Thank you.
You're welcome. I'm Nova Colster College Schools Board of Trustees, docs following budgets. Elementary budget, twenty-four, twenty-five, zero, seven, nine, six. And high school budget, twenty-four, twenty-five, zero, seven, nine, seven.
Any public comment? Any more board comment?
Angie?
Aye.
Aye. Wade?
Aye.
All right. Ten point oh two. Superintendent Wade Moore.
Okay, I'll see if I can talk Brittany, good timer going. All right. I said I'd start with my highlights since I've been here. First of all, I'm just going to say thank you, and a lot of thank yous to people tonight. The meet and greet, that was really nice to have. I probably met twenty more people, so more and more I could put names and faces. I think the better off, I'll be and will be as a, as a group and district. So that was really great. Brittany, just working hard on this budget. I mean, she gives you this, but I've seen the hours in the weekends, the nights. So we've got some really dedicated people. It's hard to start saying thank yous and you don't want to miss people, but the board themselves have been doing, I guess, that's one of my highlights, I guess. Been doing some lunches with the individual board members with some questions, you have to know them. So taking them out and that's been helpful. So that's been a real highlight so far too, so it's been great. Appreciate that, helped me get off to a good start. And then of course Chris, Evan, the people in this room, the principals, Tom, we've got Jen. People have already been giving me a lot of help, so I appreciate that. It's been great. Community support's been really cool. I guess I have a PTO thing hanging on my door that somehow appeared tonight. Where did that come from? But, so anyway, that's really nice. I just want to say thank you before I get into a few more things. But I did start, my first day was a tour of the facilities. So Robert took me around, thanks for Robert, gave a. Thanks for Robert, um, gave up quite a bit of his day. Showed me what was going on, what the buildings were like. Started out that, um, that morning with that, most of that day. Did a transportation meeting, um, uh, with Tom, with the county superintendent. I got to learn a little bit about how that process works. Evan took me through some, uh, training, uh, with Mr. Bailey on surveillance cameras. And then, um, admin team, we had a, a long day, a productive day. So that was really a highlight to me so far. That was just great to have a team around me. We looked into an author that, uh, the author of the book, The Ideal Team Player. So kind of focused on some of that as far as my theme. And then handbooks themselves, just reviewing those and going through those. And they've put a lot of time and effort into those. More work to be done there, but people are starting to, uh, I think, finding the, the meat of those things and what to get across to students and parents, staff, community, that kind of thing. So I spent time in those. And then, um, I went to the energy open. I just, all I miss is, Nancy gave me a really nice, uh, uh, meet and greet kind of time with people, took me around to a lot of the, especially the local people here, um, that morning. And then I went that night to the dinner. So it was really nice for them to invite me and get to know some of that. Element here, each, um, contributors and whatnot, um, from all over the United States really, but especially here at Colstrip. So thanks to Robin for doing that. Sat in on accreditation meeting this morning, a Zoom meeting. So I started, that was mostly really, um, connections for new superintendents, showing us really the websites and who's who and what's what, just an introduction. So just kind of getting my feet wet there. Really just familiarizing myself as much as I can with, with people, with our processes, with our procedures. Brittany over here is the only one there for a while that had all the questions coming at her. So that was, she's been a big help too. So appreciate everybody getting me off to a good start. Really, really helps. It's been extremely helpful. Kind of get into a couple of things now we've got coming up, some big days. The nineteenth is our opening, called it our opening ceremonies. In the, you know, spirit of the Olympics. We have a breakfast at seven thirty, so the board, of course, is invited to this. I'll introduce myself, tell a little bit about me. Tried to bore people too much. And then get into, I have all staff photo and then eight forty-five. Tara Brown, the connection coach, I put the, her website here. Uh, I think, uh, extremely powerful, great motivational speaker. Does a lot with, uh, helping people help each other so we can help our kids achieve and be comfortable, have a great learning environment. I've heard her twice. She's one of the few I've ever heard really get, get asked back and get asked back that fast by teachers and staff members. So looking forward to that. I did have, most of our admin team was three through eight principals. And Jen go to, um, a training just Friday. So I haven't touched base with them on that yet, the mass training session. I wasn't able to go, I've been helping sit in on interviews and that was, uh, agenda setting too, so. But there'll be more coming up on that. The objectives were though, to understand the scheduling tool and requirements for scheduling testlets that are increments and requirements now. Comprehend pre-testing tasks and locate necessary resources. Review score reports to guide instruction and understand your local assessment system and master all within it. And I've heard it was kind of mind blowing for you guys. And I went and I saw the slide presentation or through it, it was quite large. So bill testing that we have to do and hopefully we can make it meaningful coming down to us. Back to school nights planned, August twentieth at BMS, five to six P M. We stay here a little bit, uh, think of people with siblings, but also try to keep it really close too, so people get, uh, finished up. PBS, um, is the next night, the twenty-first, five to six. And, uh, high school is six till seven that same night. And then, yay, first day of school. The twenty-second, all these preliminary events to, to get us ready are going to pay off big time come when the kiddos walk in the school door.
Great. Okay.
Thank you.
Thanks. All right, thanks, everybody. Meeting adjourned.